Good evening, welcome. May I please call to order Ferndale City Council meeting of Monday, April the 26th, 2010. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Baker, Galloway, Lennon, Piana, and Mayor Covey.
Here as well, all accounted for, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the agenda, Your Honor, and if I may ask that we add to the consent agenda consideration to allow a woman by the name of Stephanie Bonner to erect inflatable structures at Gary Park this Saturday for a family party.
Very good. We'll put that on the consent agenda, item H.
Sounds right.
Is that good?
Yes.
Anything else changes or additions to the agenda?
Oh, also, Presentation D, the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission's recommendations, we are going to defer that to the May 10th meeting.
Righto. They're going to ask for about a 15, 20-minute presentation.
Correct.
And we can decide then if that is an agenda item or a presentation. Thank you.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you. The motion made by Councilmember Baker and seconded by Councilmember Piana. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Baker, Galloway, Lennon, Piana, and Mayor Covey.
Yes, adopted unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have a presentation by the Downtown Development Authority.
Yes, we do. There they are. Greetings.
Greetings, Council, Mayor, everybody at home. I'd like to introduce, my name is Chris Hughes, I'm the Communications and Marketing Manager for the DDA. I'd like to introduce the Chairperson of our Organization Committee and a Downtown Business Owner of Allure Couture. This is Talika Moore, and she's going to take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Just wanted to, before we start, the Downtown Ferndale DDA had an appreciation awards held at Rosie's O'Grady's on April 19th. So before we begin, just wanted to go over a few important stat facts. There were 4 million-plus in private and public reinvestment. There were 40,000 in the Build Program reinvestment. There were 27 new businesses in Ferndale, 13 net. There were 25-plus special events and five public project improvements. Who was nominated for these awards? The nomination criteria for 2007, 2009 were businesses' start dates, participation in the DDA Build Program, and also write-ins, where people can actually write in to vote for the nominees. The voting criteria was an online survey for 2,000 recipients in Facebook and also from the Downtown Ferndale website. There were approximately 250 responses. Ferndale DDA Awards Appreciations, in all, there were more than 100 businesses that were recognized in one way or another. And the winners are, for the Best Build Project nominees for 2007 were Anita's Kitchen, La Hoste, Pinwell Bakery, Elegance by Design, Affirmations, and the Ferndale Arts Building. The Best Build Project recipient goes to, this is before and this is after, goes to Affirmations, they were the winners. The Best Build Project nominees for 2008 was Sneakers, Blooms by JR Designs, and The Loving Touch. The Best Build Project winner for 2008 was Blooms by JR Designs. Best Face It Improvement for Non-Bill for 2007, 2009 was Enyo. And the best historical rebuild renovation was Rosie's O'Grady's. The Best Window Display for 2007, 2009 went to Pinwell Bakery. And the best landscaping in Alfrisco Space for 2007 or 2009 was Rosie's O'Grady's. The best new independent retailer for 2007, 2009 was Detroit Comics. The best new independent service business for 2007 or 2009 was Blooms by JR Designs again. The best new independent restaurant was Anita's Kitchen. These are our fabulous friends of Downtown Ferndale, that's Mayor Covey, for the Michigan Aids Coalition. The fabulous friends also went to Brian Kramer of Rosie's O'Grady's, and also Chris Johnson for the DIY Street Affair. And the fabulous friends for Dino's Dean Bock. And our Service Awards went to Stacy Tobar, Sharon Chess, Stephanie Smith, Larry Mills, and also Rick Axe, and Carrie Copeland. The Ferndale DDA Volunteer of the Year Award went to Jackie Smith of Candlewick Shop. The MSOC Board Member for 2009 was Veronica Lucic for State-of-the-Art Framing and Gallery. The Spirit of Ferndale Award goes to one of our own, A.J. O'Neill from A.J.'s Cafe. Milestone Anniversaries for five years in business here in Ferndale was State-of-the-Art Framing Gallery, The Twisted Shamrock. 15 years was Woodward Investment Properties. And 25 years was Danny's Irish Pub. 61 years was Crane Optical, and also New Way Bar for 75 years, and 82 years for Wetmore's. Congratulations to all of our great businesses down in Ferndale.
Congratulations.
I would like to take one second to add on, and I won't take any time, or, well, I'll take a minute, but just to let you all know, and everybody that's watching at home, that Downtown Ferndale was selected as one of 10 semifinalists in the Great American Main Street Awards presented by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This is a huge honor. It's a national recognition of a program. It was endorsed by our own DDA Board of Directors here in Ferndale. They encouraged our application and got behind it. We got a lot of people throughout the community and the state to support this effort. And so, we were named in the top 10, but the top 10 is good, but the top 5 is better. And that's what we're going for. We're going to find out on May 4th at 5:00 whether we're in the top 5. We're feeling pretty good about that. We are one of only two cities in Michigan that are selected. We're going head-to-head with our friends from the north, Rochester, and we are both, Rochester and Downtown Ferndale are both part of the Main Street Oakland County Program, so that's a pretty good kudos for them. We would be the first in the state, or who, if any state, anybody from Michigan gets selected, be the first in the state to be so honored. GAMSA is selected by a panel of, a national panel of experts. It examines and it validates the successes of a well-run program, which they've looked over Downtown Ferndale with a fine-tooth comb, believe me. And it also distinguishes Downtown Ferndale locally, regionally, and nationally. And finally, it gives us some really cool bragging rights. So, I want you to all stay tuned for May 4th, and hopefully, we'll be presenting you some really good news, and otherwise, we'll be happy to be in the top 10. And one last thing, is we have Business Networking Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. at A.J. O'Neill's Music Cafe, FerNet. It's going to be about security, web building, and personnel. So, thank you.
Hey, Chris, you just said that we were going for the top 5. If we make that, that is the top 5 DDA Downtown Main Street Programs in the country?
In the whole entire country, yes.
That's stupendous.
Selected by a national panel, so it is a huge honor and recognition. It's huge to be in the top 10.
Sure.
It's huger to be in the top 5.
It is huger. One last question. A lot of people are really excited about a brand-new bicycle store downtown. It's called Downtown Ferndale Bicycle Shop, and it's owned and run by a guy named John Hughes. Any relation?
Yes.
It's your son, isn't it?
It is.
Congratulate.
I'm glad to say it is my son.
Well, we're glad he opened his store here.
You do. One of my best recruitments. Thank you.
You did good. Thanks. And Ms. Moore, thank you for your presentation. Job well done. Thank you. Well, we'll all stay tuned. That's exciting news about May 4th. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
A presentation by the Ferndale Public Library.
While we're waiting, Councilwoman Piana and I attended that DDA Award Ceremony. It was very, very nice, very, very cool. Congratulations again to all the winners. Yes, Ferndale Library.
All right. Well, before I begin, let me introduce my colleagues on the Ferndale Library Board. On the next slide, we have the names listed. Ann Warner is our Board President. John Starett is our Vice President. Sarah Parmley and Mary Ann Neal, our Secretary and Treasurer, couldn't be here tonight. Patrick Dengate. And I'm Jim O'Donnell. And our Director, Doug Raiber, is also here with us today. So we're here to provide the public with information about the library. We understand that the City Council and many members of the public have heard a lot of questions and information about the library, our new building, and the relationship that our institution has with the city's finances in this time of budget crises. Next slide. Our story begins six years ago when the Council took action to make the library independent. That moved control of the library from City Council to an elected library board. Our board is responsible for setting the library's vision and strategic direction, for hiring a library director, which we think we have the best library director in Michigan. And we're also responsible for approving the budget and oversight of library operations, which includes setting policies for the library, monitoring our overall performance, which includes finances as well. Next slide. In 2007, citizens of Ferndale voted for new library funding. 69% of the voters voted yes for one extra mill, which supported bonds to finance the construction of a new library, as well as additional funding for new programs, better material, and expanded hours. The benefits of the new library that were promised and which will be delivered were more space. We have 50% more space than the old library. We have dedicated children and teen sections. In the old library, there wasn't any space dedicated for teens, and there wasn't a lot of room for kids. In addition, we have, we have good reading space. There wasn't a lot of space to sit down and read a paper, magazine, or browse through your book selections, but we'll have that in the new library. We have space for large meetings, and we also have a couple of smaller meeting rooms for impromptu gatherings of just a few people. There's going to be an inviting fireplace, which will be visible from the reading area as well as the periodical room. And our new building also has many green features, enabling it to use less energy than the old building despite having more than 50% additional space. There are also economic benefits from our library. Many studies, different studies, have looked at the impact that vibrant libraries have on their communities. A study of nine Ohio libraries found that they returned about $4 for every $1 that was invested in them. This was a conservative estimate, the study noted. It didn't include any of the real but hard-to-measure benefits, such as increased wages from job training material, increased profits from investment analysis that users can look up, increased household savings from personal finance material. Libraries also strengthen the business community. They'll make our great downtown even better. They increase foot traffic downtown, and they complement private retail and cultural destinations. Libraries help people connect with employers and find jobs. We provide career guides, testing guides, access to email and the internet, and the ability to look up information on companies that residents may be interviewing with. We also save residents money. We provide reading materials, DVDs, music, and audiobooks, all at no additional cost. Our library is also going to be a green library, as I noted a little bit earlier. We expect to be LEED Silver Certified, and LEED stands for Leadership and Environmental and Energy Design. And we may even be Gold Certified when it's all finished. If we do achieve that status, I believe we'd be the only library in Michigan that is Gold Certified. We have wells, you know, when we built that library, we sunk more than 200-foot-deep wells for geothermal heating and cooling. We're reusing gray water, which is the water that, the water that's generated in sinks from handwashing and dishwashing and so forth. We're using that and reclaiming it, and then using it for flushing toilets and for irrigation. The building's existing steel and bricks were used in the expansion. We have better insulation, low-flow plumbing, and high-efficiency lighting, including extensive use of LED and other high-efficiency lights. So we'll have a brighter space that uses less energy. Just an update on our construction, on the next slide. This library will be completed on time and under budget. Construction is going to be finished in mid-May, so in just a few weeks. Then we'll have inspections, which we expect to be successful, and occupancy permit will be issued, and we anticipate moving in June and having a grand opening at a date, some date to be announced sometime over the summer, so keep an eye out for that. On the next slide, you see a photo, it's a little rough, of the interior. This is a view out towards Troy Street in the south-central part of the building. This is where the reading space is going to be. So under those lights that you see coming down from the ceiling, there's going to be comfortable chairs for reading. You can see the fire, well, you can't see it, it's a little dark in that slide, but in the right-center part of the photo, there's a fireplace there, which of course isn't lit right now. And that fireplace is the one that's visible from both the reading area you see here and the periodical room on the other side of that glass. So just finishing up on our, the outlook for our finances. Overall, we're in pretty decent shape compared with a lot of places, especially libraries in cities like Troy. We do see the same declining tax revenue that the city is dealing with. We expect to lose about $120,000 next year in tax revenue, that's in fiscal year 12, and probably another $100,000 the year after that. But the library board and director are engaged in long-term strategic and financial planning. Certainly, the voter-approved millage funding has strengthened the library's finances. Without it, we would be facing more drastic service reductions. And to maintain our services, we're going to be looking at a number of fundraising and grant opportunities. Not just the usual book sales, which we will do, but also exciting events like galas, dinners, and we'll be doing fundraising appeals also. So we welcome citizen involvement, on the next slide. We welcome people to join the Friends of the Ferndale Library. We had a great turnout at the Friends Revival Meeting yesterday. I think more than 30 people attended. The Friends have more than 200 fans on their Facebook page, and I know there's many other people out there. Join or attend a library committee meeting. We have the committees that are listed there. Also, attend library board meetings. If any member of the public has questions about the library or comment, they can reach us by email, and they can certainly attend our meetings, just like people attend council meetings here. And finally, we would ask that people please support the library with your time, your money, and your talents. And just to wrap up, just wanted to tell people about some of the great services that the library provides, so they can take advantage of those. We have a great collection of books and periodicals. We have free movies on DVD. We provide online access to audiobooks that a lot of people don't know about, but you can go to the website and click on the link, and you're able to put in your library card number and download a book to your computer, your iPod, your MP3 player, and you have it checked out for the same period of time generally you have a book checked out for. We have a unique local music collection. We provide important access to computers, so people have access to email and internet. The old library has 10 computers. Our new library will have 40 public access computer stations. We have some great blogs that you can access through the website. We also have access to 65 local libraries, on the next slide, through our membership in the library network. So any of these 65 libraries, you look up a book on the internet, if we don't have it in our library, you just place a hold on it, and it's delivered to Ferndale, usually within a few days. We have Information and Readers Advisory Assistance Service. In the older days, this was called the Reference Desk, but they're a great resource. You come in with a specific question, and staff can help you answer your question a lot faster than you'd be able to on your own. I just used it last week. We have an outstanding staff that's ready to help in any facet that people might need help in. And finally, we are cool, friendly, and free. So, a big thank you to the whole city. Without the support of the citizens and the Council of Ferndale, this library that we're opening next door would not be possible. We look forward to seeing many new faces at the new library, as well as some of our old friends. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Give a hand. Very nice, very exciting. We can't wait for the grand opening. Very cool. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We have a presentation from Southeast Michigan Coalition on Smoke-Free Michigan.
Thank you. Thank you to the Council and all the visitors and all the public. It's a Southeast Oakland Coalition. We're not quite that big, but we've been asked by the state of Michigan through the MDCH, the coalitions across Michigan, to inform our communities about the Smoke-Free Michigan law, and so we're taking this opportunity to do that tonight here in Ferndale, and we thank you for that opportunity. 19.4% of the residents of this part of Oakland County smoke cigarettes. That means that four out of five don't. And so, we think that that, plus the history of learnings from the previous state who have enacted that law, are going to help us move this forward with as few bumps as possible for our local businesses, and that's our goal. For example, on Saturday, we're going to be at Hambo's, and we often meet there, our coalition often meets there because it's just a nice meeting space. And when we had to go smoke-free, of course, we knew how the owners kind of felt about that. It was a stumbling block for them, so we said, let's make this a win-win. So they're offering 10% off the whole day, and we're going to be there to increase the spirit of, we can do this and make it a win-win for everybody. What does the Smoke-Free Law cover? I think most of you know that, so I'm going to run through this quickly, but I'm available for more information if anybody ever wants to ask. It covers all workplaces, all food service areas, and all public places. There were, when we went through the training, there were some questions about what that really all means, and that was about two months ago now. And our Attorney General Cox had not yet made some of those decisions, so I would just encourage you, if you have questions about when you have outdoor festivals, outdoor concerts, and there's alcohol being served, and/or other beverages and/or foods, what does that mean relative to smoking rules? I can't tell you that, because you would have to call to actually get that. There were so many exceptions to this, and that, and the next thing. So just call, to be safe. Of course, we know that there are some exemptions to that. It's been widely publicized at the gaming areas of the casinos, cigar bars and tobacco specialty stores. Now, it's important to understand that those are for already existing. You can't open one today. You wouldn't have enough sales history to get that exemption. But if you've been in business in that area, that's something you could also check out on the Michigan website. That's mich.gov/SmokeFreeLaw. Obviously, it doesn't cover our homes or our motor vehicles. There's the website listed there, and also the information line. In fact, I called there today about one of my own questions, and they answered me right away. So I'd encourage you to use that. On the next slide, you see that the effective date is not 12/01 on Friday night. It's not like there's some police going out there checking, well, there's no police going out checking this stuff anyway, but for sure that, for sure that you don't need to worry about Friday night. So, and the business opens on Saturday. So what are the businesses required to do? Basically, three things. You need to post a sign. Now, there's a little sign available on the website, but it's really easy to post a sign that just says, "This building is smoke-free. Thank you for not smoking." It doesn't have to be any particular sign. Post a sign, remove the ashtrays, and then train your staff so that any kind of ashtrays or any other smoking receptacle is removed from the building. And that compliance checklist is available on the Smoke-Free Law website. I also included it with a packet of material. There's about 14, 15 copies in the back, if you wanted that material. How is it enforced? As you well know, that's been an issue here in Oakland County, but it's an issue all across the state of Michigan. How is this going to be enforced? And there's, there's multiple state departments. There's the State Health Department and the State Agricultural Department. Food service establishments are licensed under the agricultural department, so there is a coordinating process between the two. This is totally complaint-driven. That means that if I walk into, God forbid, Hambo's, which is our favorite meeting place, in a few weeks and someone's smoking and Josephine decides to do nothing about it, then I have the option and the choice and however else I want to word that to myself, to call and to file that complaint. When I went online, the complaint process wasn't online yet, and that's why I called today. I said, "How come?" And the person on the other end of the phone said, "Because we've had so many people calling wanting to make complaints before the law was even in effect, that we decided that not until May 1 is the complaint process going to be on the website." So, that's why it's not there yet, but it will be there on, on May 1. So, if someone is smoking, the owner or the manager is required to ask them to stop. And if they don't, then they're required to deny them further service and ask the individual to leave. If they don't leave, then they are to call the police or deal however else they deal with a disruptive customer or client. If they allow smoking, then the local health department will be asked to investigate, and if it persists, that could have a variety of administrative actions, including shutting down the establishment. The next thing that many of us are really concerned about, because I've been in this business a little while, as some of you know, would be the next slide, is that we in Michigan have few quitting or cessation resources. And that hasn't changed. So you can call the 1-800-QITNOW, and if you're totally uninsured, you're going to probably get some help. It'll depend upon the level of service you need in terms of what kind of help that you're going to get. But I would first ask you, if you are insured, you might as well save your time and call your insurance company and ask for help. Get nicotine patches, gum, and lozenges if you choose to quit. And from a health department point of view, which is my concern in terms of health prevention, we really need to increase the options for cessation resources. Half of our 9th grade students on a survey said they tried to quit smoking and couldn't. It's 9th graders. That's a whole nother issue we need to think about, just to help people, because this definitely is an addiction. So, Hambo's, Saturday morning, or anywhere else, but they're giving a discount. We hope to see you, and we hope, if you know of anyone else who needs information to make this less bumpy, we'd sure be available to help. Thank you.
Thanks. Before you step down, you mentioned, and you may not have these answers, so, but I just want to confirm, the biggest source of confusion that I hear has to do with outdoor patios and the areas outside of the nightclubs and the bars, which, most of which Ferndale has these. And my understanding, and I've read differing accounts, but it appears that there's no smoking permitted outside either, on the patios, if there's service, if there's drinks, food. But if there's no service, no food, no drinks on the patio, then smoking is permitted. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's also my understanding, and that was one of the questions we all asked about that. So I think that's accurate. Again, I always defer to the state, but that's how I understand it, yes. It's the issue of where is the alcohol, in other words, where is the employee required to serve?
What I hear too, though, is it's a step further, and that is, even if there's no service and no employees, that if the customer takes his or her beer with them to the patio to smoke, that that's against the law.
I am sorry, that's not a question I asked. I would have to call the same.
So this is who we call the state, or we call Attorney General Cox?
Yes. You would, if you go on that website, it gives you the phone number, which is 1-800, no, that's the QITNOW number. I just called it today, and I've forgotten it.
Okay.
But you can find it on the website.
One thing the city, we might want to consider, there's no ordinance or anything, I don't think, dealing with ashtrays outside. If you walk past, say, the Magic Bag Theater, which went smoke-free a while back, you'll find cigarette butts all over the ground. And so smokers, while we push them outside, we ought to give them a receptacle or something. So I don't know if the bar owners will voluntarily put something outside, but we're going to have to think about whether the streets and the sidewalks start to fill up with butts. Ideally, we all quit, and I'm going to try again, so if I'm more angry and mean and bitchier than usual... than usual next week.
Oh, great, next week?
Yeah. I'm timing it for the budget final finale. Thanks for your presentation. You had a question, Councilwoman?
That was exactly my question, was about the, I mean, there's really no money for enforcement, so I doubt that there's any sort of funding built into this package for cleanliness. But on the several visits that I've made to New York since their smoking ban was put in place, it's disgusting outside the bars and the gutters, and their street sweepers come through almost every night in several of their bar districts. Obviously, we can't do that here in Ferndale. So I just wondered if, if that issue had come up yet.
It did not come up in the training I attended, so I would have to call myself.
Okay. Thanks.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Sure you will.
We know how to figure that out.
Thank you.
You going to quit with me too, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
We have a presentation of the Blues Festival proceeds.
Yes, we do. The DDA mentioned the Michigan AIDS Coalition as winning an award, and it was largely because of its coordination in putting on each year of the Ferndale Blues Festival, which of course is held in the dead of winter each year. What I'm going to do, Monica Larius, first do the presentation to Ferndale Youth Assistance, and then we will, we'll do our awards. The Blues Festival is held for nine days, at the end of January, the beginning of February. This is the ninth year that we put this event on. And it's put on for a variety of reasons, including to bring people downtown. It's the middle of winter. We want people to get outside, get some fresh air, some camaraderie. It certainly helps the businesses by bringing lots and lots of folks from all over the region. Certainly, it promotes culture, promotes the economy through the supporting of the clubs, the restaurants, the bands, and finally supports the culture. But probably the best part of it is the fact that we raise lots of money for charities. And this year, we tied our second-best year. We improved from last year, grossing over $25,000 after expenses $21,000 for the charities. And tonight, we're going to make a presentation if Mr. Sewell is here. Ken? Ken Sewell from Ferndale Youth Assistance.
How are you, sir?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It is. This event for years has been supportive of the Ferndale Youth Assistance and Michigan AIDS Coalition. Together, the two agencies put on a great event. And here is our donation, $7,000 for Ferndale Youth Assistance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Ferndale Youth Assistance, we appreciate the fine gesture and the graciousness of this money. It will go to allow us to send 100 kids to camp this year. So we appreciate that opportunity. Thank you again.
Good work. Thank you. Do you want to share this presentation?
Yes, yes. Again, we couldn't accomplish half of what we do without the help of all of our venues and our volunteers. And we have a couple of people that are so supportive of Ferndale, both Denise and Dean Bach of Dino's. They help us out every year. They put on a fantastic red burn-off tent the last day of the event. And so for the, is it eight, nine, eighth year in a row, Dean is, Dino's is the proud winner of the venue that raised the most money. And if you happen to remember, this year's poster.
Was me.
Yes. There he was.
The coveted blue pigs on your board.
Thank you.
Really quickly, my wife helps out a lot with this, Denise, is a tremendous help. She even does my laundry for me sometimes. But you knew that was coming, didn't you? This is a testament to the city of Ferndale and all the help that comes within the community. I get this award personally, but it's deserving to 100 people out there that really, really put forth a great effort and put out a lot of really good food, too. So if you haven't been to this barbecue, the city smells so good on the Saturday of the Blues Festival. I would recommend that you try it out and fatten up a little bit. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
And this year, we have one other award. Local businesswoman Anna Amato of EdTech Central supports Dean very much. He sells the paper pigs that people buy and give donations and plasters them all over his walls. And apparently, she matches dollar-for-dollar that. And she wrote a very, very, very large check this year. So we wanted to present her with this. Is she here tonight? Oh, very good. I also wanted to show you how. There you go. Thank you.
I just want, I want to thank Dean for nominating me for the award because I know he had something to do with it. But my business, while in Ferndale, is a service consulting firm, and we help all kind of educational organizations in southeastern Michigan. We work with charter schools and we work with juvenile delinquents. So we're really happy to be able to contribute to, to this cause each year, and especially that the money goes to the Youth Assistance Foundation. Thank you.
Just one other little fun pack I wanted to show everybody. You know, we put the money in those blue pigs, and then it's our job to get the money out of the blue pigs. And look how hard we work. I have four dollars, but it's fun. And we enjoy it.
And this is Monica Mills, the co-chair for nine years of the Blues Festival. Thank you, and thank you to all the volunteers who help out and all the corporate sponsors as well. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, Your Honor, is public hearing on the fiscal year 2011 City of Ferndale budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Brunner, is this for you to intro?
Yes, Senator. Just briefly, I want to fill in a little bit of the history on the budget process, where we are tonight and where we're going from here. The internal portion of the budget process began back in November when staff began assembling budget requests. The public portion of the budget process began at the Monday, March 8th, regular city council meeting, when those budget requests were formally presented to the city council. Since that time, we've had eight special city council budget meetings. Like all city council meetings, those budget meetings were open to the public. In addition, we've put full and complete information regarding the budget on the city's website. And I believe that the city's conducted the budget process with the greatest degree of openness possible. Tonight, the step in the process is to hold a public hearing that's required by the city charter before the city council takes action on it. So tonight, there's a public hearing where folks can make comments of three minutes each, but there is no action required on the budget. The council's just receiving those public comments as well as receiving the 2010 tax rate request forms from the city assessor. But those will be acted on later on in the budget process. So the next steps from here, as we continue with special budget meetings on Thursday of this week, April 29th, we'll also have a budget meeting on Monday, May 3rd, and may, Wednesday, May 5th, as necessary. And then finally, Friday, May 7th, is the deadline for the council to pass the fiscal year ending 2011 appropriation resolution pursuant to the city charter.
Appreciate that introduction. Before we get to the public hearing, is there, there's not a council meeting set for May 7th, is there? You said that was the deadline.
No, that's the deadline. We have meetings at this point scheduled for this Thursday and Monday and Wednesday as necessary, if necessary.
And do you mind if I ask, we're receiving these rates. Do you know what, how this compares to last year? The total is 22.8.
The tax rates here are the same as last year. Well, let's take it sheet by sheet first. The first one is for the City of Ferndale Library. The library board is the taxing authority. The city levies that tax on their behalf.
Right.
And there is no proposed changes there. The City of Ferndale's tax rates, there's no change in operating rate or the refuse rate. The, the tax rate for our voter-approved debt will go up slightly because values are going down. And then there is a very small change in the Act 358 tax rate, which is our special tax for advertising. And that's another one where the rate can float up slightly to yield the same amount of revenue. But that revenue is capped at $50,000 for the whole city, so the rate is a fraction, eight tenths of a mil.
Don't, don't some of the, some of the rates decline slightly each year because, or was there no inflation last year because of headly?
Well, because, yeah, the charter rate has, has been rolled back from, the operating rate's been rolled back from 20 to 14.5. But because values are declining, that rate's going to stay the same. It's not been rolled back in a few years.
Thanks. Any other questions from, for requests for information from the table? If not, then this is the date and time scheduled for this public hearing. The public hearing is open for anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on that
Good evening. My name is Catherine Hirschberger, 750 West Maplehurst. I originally thought I would be speaking at the call to audience, but since this is a budget issue that I want to mention, I'll put it in here now. Two weeks ago, I was very, very pleased when you, as a group, voted to not hire our tax assessor back as a consultant. And I want to state that my feelings are that anybody who takes a buyout from the city should not be hired back as a consultant for at least two years. You're already giving them the benefit of the buyout. And I don't believe that we should be paying their salary for two, for at least two years in any way, shape, or form. And I hope that that is a policy that you could sort of use or a guideline that you could sort of use as this budget process continues.
Anyone else wish to speak tonight during this public hearing with regards to the fiscal year 2011 City Ferndale budget and our proposed tax rates? I'm not seeing anyone, then we will close the public hearing. And no actions required?
Just a motion to receive those tax rates.
Support. Motion made, seconded Baker Galloway. Discussion. And also, in a future meeting, we'll be voting on water rates and that sort of thing. It's all coming up. All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Lemon.
Yes.
Tiana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, thank you. It passes. Next item is call to audience. This is the section of the meeting where folks can speak on any issue that's not on the agenda. We ask that you do keep it to three minutes or less so that we can have as many people speak as possible. We ask that you be polite as possible and do not attack the personal integrity of any person. We ask that you share your name and address verbally or written in the back. Hi.
Hi, Crystal Proxmire. I'm the editor and publisher of the Ferndale 115 News. And I just wanted to announce to the public that we are no longer publishing on the 1st and 15th. We are doing daily updates on our news site. So as people are trying to find out more information about the budget, about the school board elections, just anything that's going on around town, I hope you'll check out ferndale115.com. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I didn't know how this was going to go tonight, but we managed to pull it off today. As a friend of mine would say, it's time to change hats. This year, Arbor Day is on Friday. This coming Friday, the 30th, it's at 9:00 in the morning instead of 10:00. We had to compromise with the school to get a bus. It's like no fun without kids. So we have to go at 9:00 because there's a big 10:00 field trip. And Cheryl over at the transportation office was very accommodating working with me. And Mr. Williams called this afternoon. He'd been off sick. Confirmed that we have a class. We have two trees to plant. We have a black maple. And we have a magnolia tree. I had to stop and think what they were. But the seniors are invited. Any resident is invited. Counsel is invited. And anybody that wants to come up. It's at Oppenheim Park, Arbor Day Memorial Forest, right on St. Louis, just south of Marshall. And like I say, this, we're going to try to go back to 10:00 next year because that really worked better for everybody. But it was nine or nothing, so it was nine. I do have some flyers. I'm going to give some to Julie Hall so they'll be available at the rec center. I forwarded a copy to you folks on council and several other of my friends in the city. I'll give a few to Cheryl Lynn so that she can have a couple at the office and hand one to you, Councilman Galloway, because you missed it without the email. But I got a brand-new flag to give the police chief when we're done here to run up the poll this week. He gave me the old one, so I can take it to the park because last year's got muddy in the rain. But that's all with Arbor Day. And just on a personal note, I would like to thank the employees that have spent so many years working for the city and although have taken buyouts and have gone on to other jobs or potentially will very shortly, thank you for all your hard work and dedication. I'll miss you as far as one of the residents of the city. Maybe some won't, but I will. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you for your work. Ferndale is an official Tree City, and that's partly due to the work of our staff and volunteers.
It's our eighth year.
Eighth year, us being Tree City USA. Yes, sir.
Well, my address is 22856 Woodward Avenue. Ferndale off slide.
You live at the Elks?
I'm the secretary. I live there. I do.
You're always there whenever I'm there.
I live there. And as you know, Mayor, we had our, our Law and Order Night on Saturday night, the 24th. And we honored some nice people this year, the Citizen of the Year, who have you picked? It was, was a nice lovely couple, Daniel Martin and Sherry Kuzman Martin. And then the Senior Citizen of the Year was Don Di Senzo. And he was honored by Jeannie Davis, who did the, speaking about him. Police Officer of the Year, Scott Blanchard, of course, was brought in by our chief. I guess he's not here, is he? Scott. Oh, he is back.
Stand up there, Chief.
Oh, there he is. See you, shorty. Scott, Scott, this is the second time for Scott. He was in 2006. So anyhow, Firefighter of the Year was brought by the Fire Department, and Roger Schmidt told a lot of things about Sergeant Ryan Makowski. Of course, they all had their families with them. It's nice to see all these kids. City Worker of the Year was Delmar Schmidt. And of course, I didn't see Bob there.
Sorry.
And I didn't see Delmar either. He called, said he couldn't make it. So you didn't miss anything. And the DPW Worker of the Year was Gino Bobinski. And I understand Byron got his shoulder broken or something or out of place? Nobody heard about that? That was a good excuse he gave us anyway, hurt his shoulder. And Gino Bobinski is a mechanic for the yard. But Gino left Saturday morning from Chattanooga. He's bringing his mother back here. It's too many tornadoes down there, I guess. So anyhow, we'd like to congratulate all our honorees and, and the people that, that picked them out. They're a fine bunch of people. And you'll see their pictures in the article in the Ferndale Friends in June and July. I think I'll have time to write it by then. I thank you.
Nice job, Jerry. It's always a nice event at the Ferndale. Congratulations to the Citizens of the Year and the city workers and folks of the year. Very nice. Yes.
Hi, good evening. Ann Heller, 1024 Leroy, speaking as the president of Ferndale Care Free Medical Clinic. Once again, just to remind people, we have two events coming up next week already. On Thursday, May 6th, is our dinner at the Royal Oak Elks. Wonderful dinner, a great delicious dinner, by the way. And at the Elks' time, our principal speaker is Chris Edwards, who is going to talk about, from Fox 2 News, who is going to talk about why he had to go to Costa Rica for his medical care. It should be very, very interesting. And then on the 8th, on Saturday, the 8th, at the Kulik Community Center, we're doing our spring clean-out. Please bring all of your old medications, old, unused. We don't care. It doesn't make any difference. And the same for medical equipment. Once again, in any condition, it does not make any difference. We take everything to either Wheels for the World or World Medical Relief to be recycled and to be used again. And when you drop them off, if you so desire, we have a donation receipt for you for next year's tax records because we're a 501(c)(3). So please remember, May 6th for our dinner up at Royal Oak Elks. We're hoping, hoping, hoping for a sellout. And then on May 8th, come over to the Kulik Community Center and drop off all of that stuff. Clean out that basement and garage.
If folks want to go to the dinner on May 6th, how do they get tickets or what should they do?
Oh, what a great question that you ask. You can go to our website, www.ferndale.org, or to the DDA, Just for Us, or AJ's, all downtown. They have the tickets. The tickets are $40 a ticket. Or if you buy a table for 10, there is a sale. It is $350 for a table of 10. So thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ann Heller. Thanks.
Christine Shepherd, DCS, Farnell DDA Executive Director. One last item, not necessarily strictly a DDA-only item. I just wanted to make mention that on April 20th, Mayor Covey, myself, and Recreation Director Julie Hall went to Oakland County to be announced that we are one of the Quality of Life Award Program communities that were selected by Oakland County. And the Quality of Life Panel Roundtable has set a challenge for us as a community to develop an action plan to maintain and improve our quality of life, seeing that Farnell is one of those communities that is unique in its setting in terms of Oakland County because of its urbanness. And one of the other communities that was selected, and there was only two, was Waterford. So really showing kind of the differences of the communities that are in Oakland County. So we have basically, the gauntlet has been thrown down that over the next year, we'll have to come up with this action plan. And I just wanted to actually give Mr. Craig Covey, our mayor, the certificate that he signed, because now they're all signed.
Very cool. If you give it to the city clerk, we will put that in a prominent place. This is pretty exciting, and Brooks Patterson was up there, and a lot of folks from the county. And we want to bring and get involved in this. It includes an assessment of the quality of life for this community, and I know a lot of people are going to have lots to say about that. But they want the school board involved. I think they want the city manager involved and council members if possible. They want the Chamber of Commerce involved. Am I leaving anyone out? Recreation?
I'll ask for, please, fire.
So we'll get more information out to you, and I think it'll be a labor of love. And there might be resources available in order to enact this, enact the goal. So there's a carrot at the end of a stick, so to speak, if I mangle that. Other speakers for the call to audience? No? Everyone's quiet and shy tonight? Nothing, Mr. Kanye? I'm sorry. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We're on to the consent agenda, Your Honor. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April 20, sorry, April 12th, and special meetings of April 7th, April 12th, and April 14th. Approval to adopt a resolution proclaiming May 3rd through 9th as Public Service Recognition Week in Farnell. Item C, approval of the contract with Jason Parent, Housing Inspector, to begin effective May 3rd, 2010, as submitted by the Community Development Director. Item D, approval to pay the city's five-year special assessment of $15,365 for its share of repairing and maintaining the Red Run intra-county drain, and to charge the expense to the water sewer fund miscellaneous. Item E, approval of contract number 10-5124 by in between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Farnell to reconstruct East Chesterfield from Fair to Fern and Fern from East Chesterfield to the Canadian National Intermodal Facility, and to replace water mains on both streets. Item F, approval of the license agreements with Club Barts for 198.92 square feet and a license fee of $298.38, and Dino Drop for 202.27 square feet and a license fee of $303.41 for an outdoor cafe use on the pedestrian alley. And to authorize the mayor to sign the agreements and authorize the city manager to approve the cafe fences. Item G, approval of the bills and payrolls certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to review by the council finance committee. And item H, which was added, and which is not showing up even though I put it in here, approval to allow inflatable structures to be erected in Gary Park on Saturday, May 1st, from 3:00 until 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, that last one's a tough one. I'm sure someone's going to want to pull that for further discussion. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well done, as always. Which items would members of the council or the public wish to pull for further discussion or elucidation? None? If not, a motion to adopt in its entirety the consent agenda? Items A through H? Support? Ah, Piana moves. Galloway seconds to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety. Discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Lennon is absent from the table. Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. That passes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the regular agenda.
Regular agenda, item A, consideration to appoint Blaise Lowe to the Beautification Commission.
Thank you kindly. The Beautification Commission has openings on it. Blaise Lowe is interested in being on that committee. Her information was very, very impressive, and so I bring the name forward. Is she here tonight? Or anyone from Beautification? No? All right. But if she's, Peggy Snow can always use help, and so that's my suggestion. Could I get a council person to appoint in a second for that?
I move to confirm the appointment of Blaise Lowe to the Beautification Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2012.
Support. Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Piana second the motion by Baker, and I appreciate it. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, thank you. That passes. Next item.
Your Honor, we have consideration of a special event permit for Cantina Diablo's grand opening. And this is mine.
Yes, ma'am.
As a matter of fact. Diablo's came to us maybe three weeks ago with an idea to try to do their grand opening for Diablo's on Cinco de Mayo. Thank you. Cinco de Mayo. And they have been very cooperative. They understand that that is well beyond our deadlines for special event permits. They understand that should they want to do this next year, they will need to comply. But we thought it was very important that we try our best to give them this event this year. So everything is currently in order. In your memo, there is a long list of contingencies. This was vetted very thoroughly by both the Special Events Committee and by our event coordinator, Michael Larry. They are basically, on May 5th, wanting to have a tent, which will then stand throughout the weekend to act as a holding area for patrons waiting for a table inside the restaurant. That will actually be on May 5th, from 3:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. They will have a DJ that night. May 6th through 9th, it will just be the crowd overflow. The contingencies address everything from maximum occupancy to which parking spaces must be used, which entry points must be secured. Definitely specifies that live entertainment will be on May 5th only. The rest of the week will be, or the rest of the weekend will be DJs. Very clear in the recommendations that the music must stop at 10:00 p.m. and that the tent must be completely closed by 11:00. Council should be made aware that in approving a special event permit, you are automatically waiving the noise ordinance by approving the event. The committee, the Special Event Committee in this case, suggests that council not waive that noise ordinance to specifically state that the noise ordinance will remain in effect. The applicant has flyers ready to notify all the surrounding businesses and residents at our request, and we are suggesting that the tent be completely removed and the parking lot ready to reopen no later than 1:00 p.m. on Monday, May 10th.
1:00 p.m.?
1:00 p.m.
On Monday?
Mm-hmm. They anticipate having it open sooner, but that's the absolute latest, that it needs to be reopened.
Appreciate it. Well, this would be the time for council members first to ask questions, but Beth is here. Beth, do you want to share anything? Beth is the manager of Rosie O'Grady's.
Anne Diablo's.
Anne Diablo's.
Yes. I think Sherilyn covered everything.
Well, we'll probably have a couple of questions, so don't run too far. It's going to take a while for folks to realize that the special event permit process is, we are really asking people to come to us six months in advance. I got an email yesterday for someone who wanted me to help them put on a street event in two weeks. And I used Sherilyn Tallman as the bad guy and said, "We can't possibly do that. I can't help you," because she won't let us.
[laughing]
But, you know, two weeks is not enough time to put on a street festival that this person wanted, so. So the tent's going to stay up through the weekend, so Cinco de Mayo is on a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So it'll be up Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
That's correct.
Are you going to have the tent open and functioning on Thursday and Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
With just limited service.
Limited service, what, drinks and?
Drinks, maybe small amount of appetizers, chips and salsa-type stuff.
Okay. And DJ, but DJ, the music stops at 10:00?
Music stops at 10:00.
And, you know, the reason I suggest that, as you know, is that there is a noise ordinance, and it's a weekday, so. And if we don't, if we pass this without a noise ordinance waiver, then you're obliged to follow the noise ordinance, which for an outdoor tent is not going to be real loud.
Mm-hmm.
So the police will work with you, but after the very, if there's a warning at all, then you have to turn that way down. At 10:00, the noise ordinance becomes stricter.
Right.
Appreciate that. And of course, there'll be no smoking under that tent, evidently, from now. Councilwoman?
I do have a question, and I see that our Community Development Director is here as well. Marsha, I have a question for you and for Beth. It's a mixed question. One of the things that our city clerk didn't mention that is sort of right at the top of this list and is right at the top of my list for a new business, is that a certificate of occupancy must be approved and in place. And I know you guys really want to open on Cinco de Mayo, but I wondered if you and our CDS director could give us maybe just an update on how that process is moving along and if it looks realistic that we'll have this on Cinco de Mayo?
Diablo's, yes. What's your certificate of occupancy?
No way! All right. All right. After all the excitement with Rosie O'Grady's, you understand why I asked?
Yes, I do.
Wonderful.
I remember.
Thank you very much. That was my biggest question, and I guess the other is just that it's going to be big, and it's going to be crazy, and I appreciate your efforts to at least manage the insanity rather than just kind of let it happen around you. So I think it's a good plan for shipping and, you know, bringing in the employees by.
Shuttle.
By shuttle. Where are you having them park offsite?
We've got a couple of different options. One is a church. I believe it's St. James.
Yep.
We're looking at a couple of different options, maybe a charter one bank.
It was some work that the DDA Parking Committee did way back when at holiday time, so I'm glad it's.
Yep.
Being used a little bit at least.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you. That's it for me.
You asked all the questions that I was going to ask.
They have their CMO.
I have one additional one. But do you see this as being an annual event? Maybe not in terms of scope over four days, but having a tent out there for Cinco de Mayo on an annual basis?
I think as long as this one goes without incident, we would like to consider that.
Okay. We just want to start setting up expectations that we'll probably see a special event application from Diablo's.
Right, but we'll start six months ahead of time.
Fair enough. I also do want to just mention again that all the residents living behind Diablo's is going to get a special letter from Brian Kramer and Beth Hussey with a cell phone number on it, so that if there are any problems leading up to the event and during the event, that there is someone for you to contact. And Brian Kramer has been very good at addressing problems, and then the city can come in and help be a partner on problem solving as well if needed on behalf of Diablo's, which has been sort of the practice in the past with Rosie O'Grady's. So thank you for being proactive in sending this out.
You're welcome.
Other questions or requests? Is there a motion, then?
This should be very long.
Do we do that yet?
I would move to approve the special event permit for Cantina Diablo's grand opening event based on the contingencies listed in the agenda packet. Do I need to read them?
You don't need to read them if they're written into that. Does it include the not?
They will be part of the minutes.
Includes not waiving the noise ordinance?
It does include reinstating the noise ordinance.
Very good. That motion is accepted. Is there a second? Second. Councilwoman Lennon seconds the motion by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Discussion? It's pretty exciting. I get to tour it. It's just stunningly neat, very, very cool. It could be a big night, though. I mean, Cinco de Mayo's become a big holiday, so we'll just have fun, but be careful as well. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes. Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Beth.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks. Yeah, why not? More applause. Like that last meeting.
That is the adoption of the resolutions honoring Farnell Youth Assistance Awardees.
Very good. I can introduce this unless someone else wants to. Each year, Farnell Youth Assistance awards a number of students and are recognized for good works and volunteerism and good grades. The county officials, states, even federal, congressmen, state senators, and always the council provides them with certificates. Those are included in your packet, and that event is coming up very soon. I don't have it in front of me, but it's.
I think it's Wednesday.
It's April 28th, yeah?
Yeah, Wednesday.
April 28th, in two days. Some of you, I assume, are coming, and you're all certainly welcome to come. It's a nice event. Any requests for information? If not, a motion?
Did we have a motion, or do we want to read the resolution? I wasn't clear on what we had.
Your call, if you'd like to read it. That would be great.
Sure. Sure, I'll read it. I'm unfortunately not going to be able to be there. I've got a work event on Wednesday, but to read the resolution, the 2010 Farnell Youth Assistance Recognition Award. This is the language that will be presented to each student. At a regular meeting of the city council of the City of Farnell held in council chambers on the 26th day of April, 2010, the following resolution was moved and seconded. Is that grammatically correct? There are many shining stars among our youth, and several notable ones lend dedicated and invaluable service to the Farnell Youth Assistance Program. Among the outstanding youth receiving 2010 youth recognition awards from the Farnell Youth Assistance is, the student's name would be listed here, of the blank group, who is a splendid example of the quality of young people who offer such promise for our nation's future. This student has set a positive example for not only young people in the City of Farnell, but for all citizens alike. Therefore, be it resolved that this council does hereby salute all recipients of the well-deserved 2010 youth recognition awards. And that list of students is attached to the agenda.
And that was a motion you're making as well, I'll bet.
Sure.
You did a splendid job as well. I like splendid. That's a good word. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, splendid. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Cobby?
Yes, absolutely unanimous vote to the youth that we are saluting. Madam Clerk, next item.
That brings us to our last regular agenda item, consideration of the Downtown Development Authority Preserve America Wayfinding Fabrication and Installation Project.
Wow, thank you, that was a mouthful. Hi.
Hi, and I'll repeat it. Um, the DDA, uh, released a call for bids for the Phase One of the installation and fabrication of the signage for Preserve America. Um, the budget for that, um, part of the project is eighty-three thousand, of that eighty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand dollars of it is through grants, um, which is seventy-seven percent of that part of the budget. Um, we received thirteen bids on March nineteenth, we had our Lakota Group, which are consultants for the Preserve America Project, review all the bids and, um, uh, send us their recommendations, and there's a, a matrix in your packet as well. Um, based on the recommendations, we had, it wasn't, uh, the lowest bid, um, type of a project, it was also based on, uh, team qualifications, project understanding, quality of shop drawings, and, um, sustainable, sustainability measures. Um, after review, they had selected three, um, recommendations, or had three of their top people, um, and we reviewed, um, our advisory committee reviewed those three intently, and, uh, made some slight modifications, um, based on, uh, one from SignStar, which is out of Florida, Florida. Um, it was not clear in their bid whether or not there were, um, a performance bond and, uh, permits, uh, included in their costs, as well as some of the electrical, um, modifications, although that was part of the signed bid, um, uh, package and the addendums that were sent out, as well as the fact that, uh, the committee felt that, uh, a team out of Florida really isn't going to be as responsive to our needs and as sustainable as we'd really want it to be. Um, so they denoted, uh, a few points down with that, and, uh, in the end, they have recommended ASI, uh, for the bid award and the contract that is before you. Uh, their bid was for, excuse me, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy cents. Um, our DDA board, um, reviewed this as well, and, uh, they approved this recommendation, that's why it's before you tonight. Uh, they do use local, um, uh, unions, as well as they will be using a local Ferndale electrician for their subcontract component.
Very good, thank you. And this, we had a presentation on the wayfinding-
Yes, you did, and-
A few weeks back.
Yes, and we went over the entire bid package in, in, intently. Great detail.
Thank you.
Hopefully I don't have to do that again tonight.
No.
Here, I've got a quick question for-
I know Melanie really liked that presentation.
Yeah, that was, that was a great one.
Melanie liked it so much, she saw it three times. Um, a quick question through the chair for the DDA director, um, I was part of some emails, um, when the team was deciding which contractor to go with, and, um, part of the conversation had to do with, um, contingencies and potential overages, there was one company that, um, was, was right at the eighty-three thousand, and then there was one that was a little bit, so it left us a little room for contingencies, and I just wanted to confirm because now I don't remember the name.
Yes.
This is the one that had a little bit of-
Yes, this one has a little bit of room, and based on the contract, they have to abide by the, the terms of the, of the bid, so if there were any overages, there, they would have to come back for approval on those items, and, um, the DDA has planned that if there is any overage, um, based on that eighty-three thousand, that we are, you know, we'll be taking that out of our overall budget, so out of the DDA's budget, if there's a question on that.
That was my next question, alright, thank you.
That was it?
That's it.
My question, Christine, has to do with, um, slightly different issue, but related, and that is the Vincent Chin Memorial.
Mm-hmm.
A year ago, uh, Mr. Bruner and I went to the Chinese-American reception where, as you all know or remember, um, we were presented with a memorial plaque that we, uh, are obliged and, and very desirous of putting up in the downtown, I think somewhere over in the area of where the post bar now is, and, uh, you asked us to hold off until we got to move on some of this, is that on your radar? Um, it's important to me that that, um, go up at some point?
We can work with the, um, the contractor in, in addressing that, that would have to be a separate, because this is actually based on the Preserve America, um, project itself, um, but we can actually work with the contractor on this as a separate item as a, um, ad, ad order, so.
But, but it was-
But it was built into the plan, of the overall Preserve America Wayfinding Plan.
The reason we held off on the Vincent Chin Memorial, was it not because we wanted it to be linked, or, or at least to fit in or match, or not?
To really, um, identify the location, as well as if there would be anything else that we would wanna do at that location beyond that, that sign, um, itself. I think there's still, um, I think what was discussed at the wayfinding, um, plan component was that there probably isn't enough local information, um, with the plaque that they provided for the Vincent Chin Memorial, so we might want to add a smaller placard that kind of helps to clarify the, the relationship.
Right, we talked about something that would bring it to Ferndale or add something about our angle, and I think-
Right.
Vincent Galloway was, was correct in bringing that issue up, but-
Right.
That is something that's on our radar and it is-
Still on our radar.
I don't want you to forget about it, I wanna see it happen.
Yep, still on our radar, but it, it, it is gonna have to be budgeted for, and that was not in the DDA's budget, um, so if that's, um, I don't know if that was an arrangement with the Vincent Chin Memorial or not, but, um, with a group there, but that would still have to be something we'd have to determine in terms of budget.
I think we, um, I don't, I think we, we're gonna handle that, and I'll ask Mr. Bruner again to keep that on his radar and to give us a report maybe in the next, uh, please within the next thirty days, on how we can see that happen, 'cause we did promise to make it happen. Do you have a, or are you good?
No, I just thought, we're gonna have to do some work on it, like you say, bringing, um, local, I, most of the, uh, as I recall, unless the memorial got rewritten, it was all about the murder and nothing about the civil rights, and we don't want them to-
Right.
I mean, I, I think it would be a shame if it gave the impression that Vincent Chin was murdered-
In Ferndale.
In Ferndale-
Exactly.
Rather than the civil rights movement started in Ferndale, which is important to me.
Definitely our concern as well, so.
I agree with you, I'm gonna take this as one of my projects on my list, but I'd like to see it happen in the next nine months or so, appreciate it.
I agree.
Alright, other questions?
Just one point of clarification, um, that the eighty-three thousand dollars that we're proving for this, um, bid is paid for by grants, it is not coming out of any city general fund buckets of money.
Nope, this is coming out of the DDA, and as I stated before, seventy-seven percent of that is funded by grants-
Okay.
Of that specific item.
Good question, if there are no other questions, then is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
To approve, um, a bid award to ASI of eighty-two, five ninety-four point seven zero for the Preserve, Ferndale Preserve of America Wayfinding Phase One signage fabrication and installation, and approve the contract as submitted, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second?
Well done, uh, motion made, seconded, Lennon, Piana, further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, this is gonna look really, really neat when it's done. Thank you, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointee report from Chief of Police Kitchen.
Hey, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, Council, um, brief report here for you, um, I'll start with the budget, after seventy-five percent of the budget year is completed, it looks like we're coming in, uh, very close to exactly as we predicted, so, um, we need to catch up a couple revenues, but we have a couple things coming up on that note, so, I can report to you that we'll be within, within five percent of the budget as we projected. Uh, crime stats, uh, this is a different story since we're only in, uh, one quarter in, but generally it appears to be ten percent down, uh, the only, uh, class, a serious class that's up is robberies, but the downward trend is, uh, led by fewer assaults, motor vehicle thefts, property damage, weapon offenses, and drug and narcotic violations, so that's generally good news, news. When I say we're up in robberies, we've had eight. That's all the, uh, hard news I have to report, but, uh, on Saturday, as Jerry Oli said, uh, we announced that Officer Scott Blanchard was the police officer of the year for two thousand and nine, and that's significant because he is only the second officer in the history of the department to do it twice, um, accompanying the legendary Patrick Terrence Sullivan in doing that twice, so it's quite a significant achievement on his part, and we appreciate the Elks, uh, putting on such a nice event for us. That's all I have for you tonight, your honor, this evening, your honor.
Any questions for the chief? Chief, since we had the presentation from the, uh, Oakland Coalition about the smoking, um, with regards to the bar detail, the police, uh, going through the, the bars, are they going to be looking for smoking or, or ticketing people for cigarettes, do you know, or?
We're not gonna, uh, we're not gonna full, I, it's a, I don't think we're going to speci, unless the bar owner's having problem, as it was described there, unless the bar owner's having trouble with a patron, I don't think that'll be our first, I, I think the attention given to this, I think if you light up a cigarette in a bar in Ferndale, probably they get pounced on, so-
Self-pit.
I don't think that's gonna be a big deal, but if, if, if a, uh, owner or, or a waiter or someone needs our assistance, we're certainly there to help.
Very good, any questions for the chief? Alright, thanks sir, thanks for a good report.
Thank you.
Good report and brief, uh, Madam Clerk, next item.
Council liaison report, your honor, if any?
I do not have any, Mr. Bruner?
None from me tonight, your honor.
I did not make the mayor's dinner this past week, did you? Were you able to go?
No.
I, I wanted to go and I, I was not feeling up to it. Anything from, uh, Transportation or Suburbs Alliance?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I am happy to announce, um, the state of Michigan has been awarded thirty million dollars in federal energy funds from the Department of Energy, and it's for the retrofit ramp up. The state of Michigan, through the Southeastern Michigan Regional Energy Office, which the Suburbs Alliance runs, went on a collaborative grant with, um, the Warm Training Center, which does, uh, residential training on, uh, energy efficiency, the Michigan Municipal League, and the two largest cities in Michigan, um, city of Grand Rapids and the city of Detroit, on doing deep retrofits in Michigan neighborhoods, um, so benefiting both residential areas, commercial centers, as well as government buildings. Thirty million dollars, we were one of, there's only one other state that got, um, thirty million dollars, and that was New York, the state of New York, so this is a big grant award, and we're, um, now working out the details of this grant, um, and hopefully providing benefits to cities who are part of the Regional Energy Office, the city of Ferndale is one, um, and some other requirements, and helping bring this money back into our cities to become more, uh, energy efficient, so stay tuned, it's a big win, not only for the Suburbs Alliance, our take is over a million dollars, um, so, uh, that puts the Suburbs Alliance at a four million dollar nonprofit organization, so almost, we went from five hundred thousand dollars to four million in the last eight months.
Wow.
So we're working really hard to bring money to all of the cities that belong into the Michigan Suburbs Alliance, and continuing to strengthen our partnerships with the other organizations who are helping to revitalize our region.
Melanie, what does it, what does that deep impact?
Deep retrofits.
Retrofit.
Um, well, it's really about, uh, helping, um, targeted neighborhoods in these, uh, which haven't been selected yet, um, to, um, help do energy efficiency upgrades in their homes, so over ten thousand homes, um, by the end of this grant will be, um, helped in terms of doing energy efficiency upgrades, so, um, you can go to the Suburbs Alliance website and read more about the press release and the program at suburbsalliance.org, um, as well as, uh, I think the city of Detroit has one, and the Michigan Municipal League has a, all have, um, some press releases about this grant award, it's big, so, stay tuned, and, um, we'll have more information as, uh, this grant unfolds. It usually takes a while for, uh, federal government grants to get rolling, so-
And Ferndale can, can have a piece of that, Ferndale, residents or homes?
The neighborhoods haven't been selected yet, but, um, cities that have gone through the redevelopment ready communities program and are part of the Regional Energy Office will be, um, looked at first, but so far the re, that, yes, so far, um, but the neighborhoods haven't been selected yet and probably won't be for the next four to five months.
Okay. Well, still, let's give a hand for thirty million dollars coming to Michigan. Thank you, anything else there? If not, uh, Madam Clerk, is it called a council?
It is, your honor.
Uh, Chief Kitchen, anything else from the police department, sir?
Nothing further, your honor.
Alright, um, Julie Hall from the Recreation Department.
Mayor and Council, I just want to invite everyone who hasn't registered for the twenty-fourth Annual Ferndale Foot Frolic on Sunday, May sixteenth, to get registered online on our website. Uh, we do have a ten K, and for those who aren't as ambitious, we have a five K as well, um, and you're welcome to walk if you would like. Uh, I'd also like to congratulate Jeff Comissars on our staff and his wife Katie, who welcomed a son over the weekend, uh, Jonathan Jeffrey Comissars was born on Saturday, and I'd also like to, those people who are, have seen our new office hours and have started to see some of the tra, staff transition, uh, from budget reductions, have noticed that Barb Miller is no longer in our office, um, she's now over in CDS, and I'd like to thank her for her time spent, uh, with our department, she's doing some training over there, um, in anticipation of, of budget cuts, uh, so, uh, she's been a great help, she's still working with the Ferndale Foot Frolic, so those people who have stopped by the office and have not seen her there, she's still involved. Um, and then Sue McCleary, who has, has really helped build our rental program but is, um, taking the separation, and her last day is on Friday, would publicly like to thank both of them for their involvement with our department. Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks Julie. From the fire department, chief?
Nothing tonight, thank you, your honor.
Nothing tonight, sir? Uh, Chief Schmidt, are you, uh, are you gonna be leaving us at some point?
Friday.
This, well, come up front, let's at least, uh-
I'll be back Thursday.
You'll be back Thursday? Okay, well, for the folks at home, um, watching the show, um, we ought to, uh, formally recognize you, chief, you've done a very, very, very good job, you've been the chief most of the time that I've been up here, you've helped try to take us to the, to the next level, and, um, we, we understand that you are taking retirement, um, that you're not gonna be a stranger, but I for one just wanna congratulate you on doing a really, really good job, um, we're gonna miss you, and I'm sure, I don't know if other council members wanna say something as well?
Roger, thanks for your service and loyalty.
Thank you.
I got the pleasure of working with you for twenty-five years. Appreciate it.
Um, we just really appreciate it, and, and so I just, for sure, I wanted the folks on, uh, on, watching on television to, to get, uh, look at you again, and we'll see you at events, and we'll see you here Thursday at the, the next event that we have.
Thank you, your honor, and, uh, all members of council, I would say, I would thank the citizens of Ferndale for all their support over the years, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve them, I've enjoyed it.
Round of applause for chief. Sherilyn, uh, Tallman from the clerk's office?
Um, yes, please get out and vote Tuesday, May fourth, for your Ferndale and/or Hazel Park School Board Directors.
A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, and also our office will be open this Saturday from nine AM until two PM, if you need an absentee ballot, please come in and get one.
Very good. Uh, Marcia Shear, CDS Department. You got something to share for us too, good. Sorry, I couldn't see you behind, uh, you're sitting with all those, uh, hunky firemen back there.
As you're aware, I have chosen to also accept the buyout, and my last day will be Friday, I just wanted to take this time to thank the city for the incredible opportunity it's given me to serve the citizens and businesses, and I wish the city and council success in these difficult times and prosperity to everyone, thank you so much.
Aw, well, thank you, Marcia.
Marcia, thank you. Thank you.
Stay up here for just a second, I didn't realize you were also retiring on Friday, so my, my apologies, but, uh, um, I think you've done a very, very great job as well, and, and it's a tough, tough job.
Thank you.
But just look at the glittering city that we have and all the open storefronts, and you had a hand in every single one of them, and a role in every single store and business, so, um, and, and even managed to get Diablo's a, a permit to open, um, that fast, so, um, anybody wanna share anything?
No, I just, well, yes, I do, I just wanted to thank you for, um, continuing to propel Ferndale forward with some very modern forward-thinking, planning and zoning, um, you know, you and I share that love, um, and, uh, I really thank Ferndale as the leader in Southeast Michigan, and we couldn't have gotten here without you.
Thank you.
Big role in the zoning, all the changes, the modernization, anybody else?
I was going to, I might call the council.
That's cool, that'll work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Shear. Mr. Bruner?
Well, since we've recognized the separating and retiring employees in the room, I don't have anything else, uh, to add.
You were gonna thank them as well?
Yes, absolutely, and, um, uh, well, I have an opportunity to share my thoughts with them each personally over the, um, course of the week, but it is, is a, uh, historic time in, um, in Ferndale's history when we have a lot of folks that are, uh, separating, uh, simultaneously now, and I just want the, uh, the council and the folks at home to know that those of us that will, that are sticking around, as it were, will, um, will, uh, carry on.
Um, are we gonna have an acting, uh, chief on May second? I mean, an, an act, if the captain's gonna-
Well, is the-
Managing the show for a while?
Fire captains in the room, no, uh, or is there a fire, yep, there's one.
There's one.
Um, their job description includes assuming the chief, uh, duties of chief in his absence, and then there's a process that the council can go through to, uh, appoint a provisional or interim fire chief, and then eventually, uh, a permanent replacement, so that, um, process will start in May. So, that process will start in May.
Right. And I think I knew that, just wanted to let people know that there'll still be someone in watching.
Yeah, still, still have the lights on at the fire stations.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Brunner?
Nothing further.
So, when is our next council meeting? We have one Wednesday?
No.
Thursday on the budget.
Ferndale Youth Assistance on Wednesday, special budget meeting on Thursday, and then perhaps again on Monday.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Christ.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing from the City Attorney? Councilwoman Piana?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everybody who has provided their life's work in the city of Ferndale for the people who are not here tonight, who have chosen to retire. So, I just wanted to personally say thank you, and thank you for your professionalism, dedication, and hard work.
I also wanted to say that my husband and I, Jim, saw this notification on Facebook that the downtown Ferndale Bike Shop was having a first-ever community ride, and we just showed up last Thursday and had a great time meeting new people, and we biked 15 miles at a very slow pace that I could handle. I am not very conditioned to ride 15 miles at the moment, but we went through Oak Park, Huntington Woods, Royal Oak, Ferndale, and through Palmer Woods in Detroit, and it was a really great ride, and we ended at the Loving Touch for Earth Day. And so, next time you see it on Facebook, I encourage you to go down there and do a community ride through the neighborhoods and see what, see what it's like. And then, the second thing is, is that I have been appointed to the SEMCOG Executive Board as an alternate member. I am a council liaison to SEMCOG, as all members of SEMCOG have a liaison, but I have chosen to go the next step and become involved in their executive board as an Oakland County representative. I'm an alternate, so that means there's two people who are permanently representing our area for Oakland County, and that is the Mayor of Walde Lake and Jeff Jenks over in Huntington Woods. So, if either of them cannot go, I go on behalf and vote for projects and funding through SEMCOG. So, I'm excited to take on that role as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And SEMCOG is the Southeast Council?
Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. So, you can go to semcog.org to learn about how they're using our transportation dollars in the region.
It's important, it's a very important agency. Congratulations again.
Thanks.
Councilman Galloway.
Just a couple things. I'd like to thank Chief Schmidt for your years of service here. He helped us transition from a longtime fire chief into a new era, helped us explore a lot of options as far as service delivery and different ways we might do that. I've worked with him on the Pleasant Ridge contract over the last couple of years. We've talked about Hazel Park, Royal Oak Township, and of course, he was there for getting those things started. So, I think he's really laid some groundwork for, you know, regionalization and helped us get thinking about that and moving in that direction, and not to mention all the help he's been in the departments and the stations themselves. So, thank you, Chief, for all that. And Marcia Shear, I think similarly contributed a lot to the city when she came here. We had a 40-year-old zoning ordinance and master plan that was more than a bit out of date, and she leaves with, having drafted and then redrafted, the zoning ordinance, come up with a new master plan that I think is very forward-thinking and helps us to better utilize the space that we have here in the city, and good work there, Marcia. Set us off on a good pace. And then finally, two years ago today, I got married to Robin Harrington. We're still married, and so I'd like to wish her a happy anniversary, and sorry I didn't see you today. Hope you're home soon.
Yeah, well, you'll see. Don't we have another meeting after this?
Yes.
All right, Robin, chill, he'll be there shortly. Councilman?
Just to reiterate, all the people are leaving this Friday. I've had the opportunity probably to work with just about all of them, and all these people, I saw the list, and this is too many to mention, but they're hard-working, loyal, dedicated professionals that are gonna be sorely missed around here, and I just wanna thank them for everything they've done for the city. I wish them well.
Well spoken. Mayor Proton Baker?
This is a real time of transition in Ferndale. I spoke to Shirley Elgram earlier today in the City Manager's Office, who is also taking the buyouts effective this Friday, and I realize from her voice how upsetting this is, this transition is. And what I want to let residents know first about this transition is that people aren't just leaving and evaporating into thin air. There are plans, there's succession planning going on, there are some people who will be invited back. I take your comments, Katie, but we, you know, we don't have a lot of depth in our organization at this point right now. In some of our divisions, we've only got one person doing one thing. So, in order to transition to some of the different ways that we'll be operating, including our clerical pool and things like that, we will be inviting some of the people with some specialized skills, like our HR manager and the City Manager's Assistant, to come back for short periods of time to help with some of that training. So, that is going on, there is succession planning, the city is not just going to close up on Friday. Two of the people with whom I have had the pleasure of really developing close relationships over the last two and a half years are in this room, and I'm really not good at saying goodbye to people. I couldn't even say goodbye to Tamika when she left, but I will do my best. Chief Schmidt, we've had, I've had the pleasure of working with you as your council liaison, first with Councilwoman Gumbelton, and now with Councilwoman Piana. I have appreciated your candor, your openness, and your patience. At least never show your frustration when I, when I don't initially understand why something works the way that it does, and your willingness to help encourage council members to really step up and get involved with other cities and political leaders in other cities has been especially important to me in building relationships, which I hope will lead to sort of a regional fire authority sometime in the near future, and I thank you for that and for the legacy that you've left in that department. And Marcia Shear, your magnum opus, that zoning ordinance and that master plan, was an absolute pleasure to work with you over the last two and a half years on the Planning Commission. It was the appointment that I knew I wanted when I came on City Council, and thankfully no one else did. So, over all of the extra meetings and all of the late nights when the air conditioning wasn't turned on in City Hall, and all of the, all of the research, it was a wonderful process, looking back on it now. And you're in a very tough position where you're asked to be the good guy and the bad guy at the same time, and that balancing act is never easy, and I appreciate you having to be tough yet welcoming. So, thank you very much to both of you who are in the room.
Very good. This is the season of awards, and one of their agencies or organization, Citizens for a Fair Ferndale, which came out of the Human Rights Ordinance efforts years ago, has annual awards, and these are folks who donate a lot of time and effort and make the city a better place to live. The honorees this year for Good Neighbors Awards by Citizens for Fair Ferndale include Angela Barboza Ryan, Laura Bellamy, Kevin Deegan Kraus, Doug and Penny Gephardt, Jonathan Glab, Ralph and Christine Girrell, Sherry Cruisman and Dan Martin, John Sterrett, who was here earlier, Sherry Wells, La Leche League of Ferndale and Oak Park, Clerk Charlton Molly Bascom Keller, and Gigi Vanderweel. The Community Partner Award goes to Jerome Raska and Robert, Robin Yelverton of Blooms by JR Design. Again, what makes the city so cool and wonderful is all of the folks who work, and it's good that our city not only has these volunteers, but that we recognize them, and we recognize them at the Elks, we recognize them at the DDA, and for Citizens for a Fair Ferndale. Last item, I wanted to write a letter to the editor, and I just, I've run out of time, but a couple of weeks ago, a former mayor, way before Mayor Geddard, wrote a letter to the editor, and I just wanted to address a couple of things. Former, former Mayor Gertley took us to task, chaired council, and said in his letter, "City Council has failed to fund the retirement system to the tune of $600,000 over the past decade," and declared this neglect as part of the crisis. This is absolutely not true. Mayor Gertley knows better than this. The retirement system is fully funded, we are committed to funding it fully at all times, it is a legal requirement. It has been fully funded and will always be fully funded. During the past decade, when the stock market was doing well, the investments did well, and there were no city-required contributions. After the stock market tanked and all of us lost so much of our retirement funds, that is why the city now will gladly contribute to keep the retirement fund fully funded. Mr., or Mayor Gertley goes on to say that, "It takes us to task for even talking about possibly cutting any of the public service," and he says, "Without strong public service and public safety and capability, you can have all the nice libraries, rec. centers, and downtowns you want, but no one will be safe, and your neighborhoods will be unprotected." This is very true. But with all of the strong public safety, and police and fire, if we have no downtown, no recreation, no libraries, then that too would be a city that would not be all that pleasant. And the answer, of course, is that it's not an either-or. A community is both. It is people, it is public safety, it is police, it is fire, it's also recreation, and it's library, and all of the services that make a city great, and I think all of our goals is to protect all of the parts of our city. So, with that, we will close this meeting, and we are going to, in the closed.
Can I move to the paper? Purpose of Labor Negotiations pursuant to Section 8C of the open meetings, can we go into closed session?
Support seconded by Councilman Galloway, motion by Councilman Lennon. We will take a three-minute adjournment and then be in closed session. Thank you.
Your Honor, we need to take a roll call vote on that motion, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry. I just like to gavel.
I know. Councilmember Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Cuffin.
Yes, passes. We are going into closed session. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Did you remember this one?
I wanted to say something to him. Yeah? Nine?
Yeah.
I'm not making sure.
Well, we have to stop and ask. You need to show up, I don't wish to rush.
Hi. I was gonna mention your historical stuff. Yeah.
See tomorrow. Good smoke.
Yeah.